Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, it's now 5:30 and I call this work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. The city clerk will note for the record that Mayor Kautz is absent today. So, item one, we're gonna be looking at the Burnsville Center, the County Road 42 redevelopment plan. Jenny Faulkner, our Community Development Director, and Tom Whitlock of Damon Farber, who's our consultant, will be presenting this evening, so Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Whitlock, take it away.
Thank you Acting Mayor and Members of the Council. And we just wanted to come before you tonight, before we kick off this process with the community and let you know what the process is going to be. See if you have any questions and introduce you to Tom and his team. We're just gonna go back and forth with a few slides and then we'll stand for questions.
All right, thank you Jenny, thank you Acting Mayor and Councilmembers. As Jenny said, my name is Tom Whitlock, I'm President of Damon Farber Landscape Architects. And we think this is really the right time for this project. If you look at retail nationally and the rise of Amazon, people are shopping differently than they once did. Major retailers like Sears and Macy's and JCPenney are all kind of scrambling to figure out what the next evolution of retail is. And so if you look regionally, within the metropolitan area here, you see the city of Minneapolis making major investments on Niclet Mall, trying to create a unique experience and draw people to, there's not a lot of retail on Niclet Mall anymore, but trying to draw people to downtown. If you look at areas like Southdale, the increased density, new uses, housing, office expanding, the introduction of Lifetime Fitness to Southdale, trying to introduce new uses to malls to create activity and drive activity at the malls. We've recently worked at Ridgedale for the city of Minnetaka, again trying to reinvigorate the area around Ridgedale. There's new uses being introduced there with apartments and multifamily housing, new investments going at the mall. And the city of Minnetaka is pushing forward new public improvements to improve pedestrian connectivity to the mall, a new town center. And then if you look at areas like Roseville, the owner of Roseville Mall is really looking at, from within, from the inside out, how that mall can change to better serve the community. So, there's a lot of things shifting, and if you begin to look at Burnsville Center and the County Road 42 area, it's uniquely positioned, it's really a gateway from the southern part of the state into the metro area, capturing a lot of traffic from 35W as it splits to 35E and 35W. County Road 42 is a major east-west connection, so it has great access and connectivity. It also comes at a price, those major roadways make it challenging for pedestrian connectivity through the district. If you think of somebody coming to Fairview Ridge's and how do you get to Burnsville Center or to County Road 42? It can be challenging, so we're gonna be looking at those things. Certainly the extension of the Orange Line is a major opportunity in the transit hub, and how that fits into the revitalization is an important aspect. And then certainly this is already a great retail destination, both the mall itself, but the area along the County Road 42 corridor has a lot of successful retail. You have major employers, you have a mix of housing around the edges of this district. So, we're really excited and we think the time is right to look at this. So, we brought, you know, thinking about this, we wanted to make sure we brought a team together that not only looked at this from a typical planning perspective, kind of from the outside in, but also looking at it from the retailer's perspective, from the inside out, of what is gonna make this a win-win for both them and the community. So, we have Leland Consulting, which is a firm out of Portland, Oregon, who does work nationwide on market research and strategic, helps with strategic development around retail. Gensler Architects, they're the architect that's currently working with Roseville Mall, looking at, that's Goldman Sachs, I believe owns that mall, and they're looking at it from the inside out on how to revitalize it and make it a win for them. Kimley Horn, certainly you might be familiar with them, they're a local engineering firm, but they're currently working on the Orange Line extension, so having that continuity is gonna be important to our team to have them involved. And certainly Bob Close Design, Bob is a professional who's been in this local area for a long time, and we're currently working with him on developments around Southdale. So, that's the team that we brought to this effort, making sure that we're both looking at it from kind of the outside planning perspective in and from the retailer's perspective out. So, just a quick kind of snapshot as to the overall process. Right now, we're just kind of rolling up our sleeves, getting a lot of information and data gathering about this area. We're gonna be doing a three-day workshop at the end of July where we're gonna be bringing all of the stakeholders in to get their input and understand what kind of opportunities and constraints there are. We'll be asking and the community will be involved in that as well. And then we'll begin, that'll really begin to create a framework for this overall effort. And then over the following months, we'll begin to kind of backfill the overall, the study, refine that plan, get it back in front of you for comment in September, and then look to wrap the overall effort up by the end of the year. And I know Jenny wants to talk a little bit about the stakeholders that we're gonna be engaging. You probably know how to operate that better than I do.
Real quick on this, the city is leading the effort to get additional community input, so we're working with Communications, Marty and his team are putting together a website like we did for the comp plan, post some questions to get a broad community input on the concept and then on the final plan. Our stakeholders list that we identified certainly include you, our commissions, and this does cover a broad range of entities at the city. When you think of the department staff that's on it, we have communications, public works, natural resources, planning. It's just a broad possibilities of what could happen here, so we wanna make sure most people are at the table to bring those ideas forward. So, that's why we have our three commissions that will, gonna ask to participate. We have our partner agencies, you're familiar with most of those, we certainly are gonna include the library. They are a landowner at a key corner in that area. Mindot, the transit folks, will have experience, Burnsville invited. And then certainly the property owners, and this is where I think that the key discussions will take place. There's a lot of opportunities to be had on the private property and what can we show them? What do they wanna do with their property? What are they thinking? How does that relate to what we think we may want to see as a future vision? So, Tom and his group will be reaching out to those, they have contacts with many of those property owners already. So, we've just listed a few here. City staff, I mentioned that, and then certainly we'll include our business folks, the Chamber of Commerce, and our major employers from the area that we've identified. So, if you see something that's missing either now or in the next week, let me know, someone that you want added, and we'll certainly make sure that they're included. And then the schedule.
So, this is just a snapshot to the overall schedule, and I won't go line item by line, because I can't see that far. But just generally, the area in blue is our data gathering, which is really the first two months of the effort. So, we'll be pulling together kind of all sorts of data, both national data on retail and understanding these retailers, but also locally, as far as properties, uses, property values. We'll be looking at, obviously you've already changed the zoning to a mixed use. We'll be then obviously getting that input from the partner agencies and the community at large. The workshop is right at the tail end of that blue period where we'll get additional input. And then the yellow is where we begin to refine the plan, and that's where we really begin to test what works, what doesn't work, and we'll be engaging different stakeholders along the way. But right at the, kind of the middle to tail end of that yellow period, which is about two and a half months, is, are gonna be our check-in in September with you to not look at a finished plan, but look at the plan in process to get your input, so we can continue to have your input influence where the project is going. And then after that refinement, we really begin to pull the final document together and get a draft really after Thanksgiving and have it wrapped up by the end of the year.
So, our next step, as Tom mentioned, a lot of data gathering, we're giving them and his folks a plethora of information and links to others' websites for all kinds of data and any and all data that we have. He mentioned the workshop, with Night to Unite coming up, we're gonna put together some cards that we can hand out directing our public in our neighborhoods, because I think we've all heard from citizens that live here, that shop there, you know, what's happening, what could happen there. A lot of our residents have ideas about what could happen there, we do wanna hear from them. So, we're putting together a bunch of cards for everyone to distribute at Night to Unite, to direct them to our website. And then as Tom said, we'll be checking back with you on the concept before it's finalized. And certainly you'll be participating in the stakeholder session at the end of July, but as they put together their plan with all the data to come up with a plan that's reasonable and workable in the market, that's what we've asked them to do, you know, anybody can put together a plan, but if it's not reasonable and doesn't hit the market, it's never gonna happen. So, we're looking to get a plan that is doable for us. It'll also lay out phasing, a high level of magnitude of any public improvements that may be needed out there. And this really is a document to show private property owners, I think more than anything, what they can do with their property. And there may be some zoning changes along with that and some streetscaping and that kind of thing. Maybe some new uses, maybe a new park or something, so, no, I don't, we don't know what it's gonna be, but opportunities are out there, and I think we all have an open mind going into this.
Yeah, I have a question. When, I was off by Ridgedale yesterday, it really looks nice out there. What was the timeline and how long it took for the buy-in and for really the owners to get on board and start getting things accomplished?
Well, the study that we did was probably a four and a half, four and a half month study about six years ago. And they were already behind because there were developers coming in and proposing new, larger mixed-use projects adjacent to the mall. The mall itself was beginning to think about what the next evolution was, and so it was a chance for really the city to catch up and create, begin to create public-private partnerships. Because Ridgedale is unique, that the city only owns the streets up to the curb line, and they don't own any space beyond the curb line. So, all the public improvements were really a partnership between the developers and the city. And so it was really creating standards that developers could then become, come in and help create the public realm around Ridgedale Mall. So, there was already work being done as we were studying that project six years ago, and then it's just continued to evolve since then.
So, that public-private, was that more where the city did more of the infrastructure improvements around it and the owners did the improvements themselves?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Augustus, and if I can, in conversations with their Community Development Director over there when we were checking out references and whatnot, they find very, the staff and the council there finds very much value in the plan that Tom's group put together, because it led them to have defined standards like he talked about. So, when they did come across something that was in their CIP to be replaced, a road project, if it was in that area, they knew when the time came, this is what the standard is, and they've kept to that. So, it served as a really good guiding document for how things should be in that particular area when the time is right.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you Mayor, we'll steam ahead then, thank you very much.
Dig in.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay, our next item, we'll be looking at a sketch plan review for Northland Real Estate Group for the 100-unit active adult apartment proposal. And this will be located south of Grace United Methodist Church, and that will be at 15309 Maple Island Road. So, we have Deb Garros and our city planner, our city planner and...
We'll also have Kendra.
Kendra, you are here, yes. Fantastic, I was wondering if, I was like, am I gonna recognize? So, fantastic, so we have, we do have Kendra here, and she will be able to answer questions as well. And you are with the Civil Engineering Group?
Correct, I'm with Landform representing Northland tonight.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, ladies.
Thank you. The sketch plan that we'll be talking about tonight is somewhat familiar, I think, to many of the councilmembers, if not all. About two, two and a half years ago, Grace United Methodist Church came before you in a concept plan for a different project that they had wanted to kind of be the developer on, that involved assisted living, memory care, cooperative type of development. And the council talked about the infrastructure, you know, how it could be serviced and those types of things. And at that point in time, it would have continued to be a nonprofit, you know, associated with the church. Since that time, Northland Real Estate Group has a purchase agreement on the property, and they've been working very closely with the church for about the past year or so in taking a look at how can, how could they make a development that would fall into alignment with some of the goals and objectives that the city has, and then also take advantage of the unique site characteristics out there. So, what they are proposing is a, an active senior living development, no assisted or memory care. It would be a private, a private property, so it'd be pulled or back on the tax rules, if you will, from what is not. They would be looking to basically combine all four existing parcels replat into two lots. The northerly lot would remain with the church, the southerly lot then would be a private development for this 100-unit active living and its independent living. And what they're showing is basically a four-level type of complex. They have, on the right-hand side of the building, there is a rooftop deck, again trying to take advantage of the unique views of the lake and the park that they are surrounded by, and then also an outdoor pool. And the, some of the specifics are that we would be looking at, oh, I'm sorry, I need to pull that out here. The possibility of having joint, will there be joint parking between the church and the facility? So, to make maximum use of the minimum amount of pavement, if you will. They're looking at about 88 stalls underground, and then the rest would be all shared parking. The church does have some space available for various uses, and even though this would be a separate private entity for the active living project, they do see or anticipate that there could be some joint uses and joint participation between the church where they have available conference area, that type of thing in the church, and then we have the facility. One of the other components of this is the possibility of adding on, or adding additional trails to the city's park, this is Crystal Lake West Park. The park is somewhat unique in that it was acquired by the city many years ago through a variety of different grants. And as such, there is research that is needed, this was brought up back with the church a few years ago, but there is research that's needed to find out what the city can do within the park. Can we allow private use? Because their concept does include basically creating additional trails and connecting the private development right to the city park and trail system. And then also, the concept does include providing sewer through the park in order to access the site, rather than go all the way around Crystal Lake Road and then back down Maple Island Road. Some of the positive elements of this are that the current church site is on a septic system, so the septic system would be removed. The site now does not have any stormwater management involved. This would be a total redevelopment, the church building would remain as is, but all of the parking would be, you know, redone and improved with curb gutter. And they would provide stormwater management to meet the city's current requirements. Let's see, they're looking at a density of a little over 32 units per acre. That density would be in line with our heart of the city density, which is basically 22 to 57 units per acre. There are a couple of options, anything that they would want to do would require a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning and plating. They could look at going through a high-density residential, but that really wouldn't get them the density that they're looking for. So, in researching this, what staff is suggesting, council may want to consider, is looking at the site as a mixed-use site, both religious assembly and then high-density residential or uses that are allowed in the mixed zoning district. And in the past, we have discussed this site, because it is so unique, having this, you know, having this great view and this really central location that you don't really have any surrounding uses, but, you know, the city park, that there could be something really unique that occurs out there. And again, that mixed zoning, mixed land use would accommodate that. In addition to that, as far as the considerations for council that we have outlined, or the issues would be basically just Crystal Lake West Park and its use. And if the council has input on what your feelings are regarding private use of the public park facilities. In addition, there has been some research done through our Natural Resources Department, and the area of the park where the sewer line would go through, although they have an option of doing directional drilling, if you will, so there would be little impacts, you know, in initially making the installation. If there needs to be any work on that line over time, we've got very significant, large, old oak trees and cottonwoods. This is a natural resource unit as far as the Natural Resources Department is concerned, so very high amenity area, and I think that probably ties back to, you know, why the city was able to obtain those grants years ago in order to preserve the open space. The plan that's on file for those grants is basically that this remain an open space park with the trails that are installed currently. And then there was a small access and parking lot available off of Crystal Lake Road that accesses the park. So, we would need to do some more research, the applicant has provided us with an escrow for the city attorney to research, you know, how we acquired that land and what options are available. We gave them, we told them that they could do that, or the city could do that, and that's what they opted to do. So, we do have that escrow in hand. And I think with that, I am open for questions, and Kendra is here and can address you as well. Thank you.
Okay, do we have questions?
On the trails that you're talking about building, who would maintain those trails?
I think we certainly are open to maintaining them as part of the association or dedicating them as public trails. We just think with an active adult community, it's really important that they be able to access the nearby trails and that nearby park. So, we're certainly open to working with the city to define the best way to deal with that.
Do you know what the closest housing is to this?
It's over 700 feet away, yeah. This site is within the Shoreland District, but you also have its tremendous change in elevation, so it's really up, up at the top of the hill. And one of the things they noted in terms of the design, although they did not provide us with elevation drawings at this point, they would look at probably having residential-type character, you know, with, as opposed to flat roof, a pitched roof type of system, and really trying to take the best advantage of the natural resources out there. But yet, because it is wooded for the most part, folks looking at it from the lake are only going to see the very top, you know, probably part of the building and not the entire site. And then from 35, it will be highly visible.
Just like I did a couple of years ago, or whenever it was, came before us before, I have serious concern about allowing a private entity to put a line through a public park. I think it, I'm not given a conclusive statement, but I think it sets a potential bad precedent. And that is something that I will look seriously, seriously at when, when and if it passes other muster, it comes back. So, I'm not, I'm not totally made up my mind, but I have serious, serious reservation because of that.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Couple of questions, you, Ms. Garros brought one up. Because I used to live on Crystal Lake some years ago and enjoyed the lake and enjoyed the community around the lake, that west end being all-natural was a big deal, and I think everyone wants to see it preserved that way. So, you did answer, but if I may ask the applicant's representative to elaborate a little bit on, it'd be great if we had a little bit of an elevation view of just exactly what the new look would be. In other words, if I were living on the lake... In other words, if I were living on the lake or I was boating on the lake and I looked that direction, how much of a roof line, how much of a structure am I going to see? Because it's going to change now for everybody to have something there other than trees, which is, you know, the, the church is completely invisible behind all the tree line. Maybe in the winter, you can kind of see a little bit of it, but, um, uh, so can you give us a, a better detailed representation of what we would expect and our residents in that area expect to see?
I absolutely can prepare that. I don't have one with me tonight, but I can tell you that we're working very hard, and this, uh, close-up shows it a little bit better, very hard to preserve the, as many of the trees as we can. And with the separation, uh, both in distance and elevation from the lake, I think those existing trees that are preserved are going to do a nice job of screening that. And we are looking at, I do have, um, concept of a rendering elevation with me tonight. Uh, if the council would like to see it, I'm happy to pass that out. But it is a pitched roof, trying to keep that residential in nature as well.
Yep.
So we certainly would be happy to prepare that. Uh, we haven't completed, we wanted to get through this, we haven't completed our survey work, which we need to, to do that, but happy to provide that.
Thank you. Follow, some follow-up, I got a couple to go. Is that okay?
Go for it.
Um, the, uh, Councilmember Kaufman brought up the concerns of, uh, through the park. It sounds like reading the background, engineering says it's okay to do or it can be done, not okay to do. And, uh, the escrow has been placed and, uh, to do the additional study to find out if we legally can allow that, right? And I thought we'd actually had that answered question from the prior few, but we never really got that far, I suppose. And we kind of, those projects stopped before they could get that far. So moot point to discuss whether that is really going to happen or not. So there's an alternate route, obviously, down the road, and it tears up a new road, but that can be, that can be fixed, but there's additional costs in that. So, um, it's nice to see more development happen. Obviously, we, we love development in Burnsville because we don't get to see it as much as, uh, cities with a lot of brownfield that's, uh, getting built on all the time. Is the, uh, did you mention by chance the valuation of this development?
I did not, uh, um, but it is about a $40 million, um, project, I believe. Looking, get a quick look in my narrative to see if we wrote that.
And for Ms. Garros, ultimately, what is that going to come on the tax rolls at? It's a, it's a $40 million build. What is ultimately based on? The type of product is, is what's the valuation that would go on, that would be for tax purposes?
Um, I don't know that number, but it would be a commercial, um, valuation if we were to go with the mixed, um, zoning. Um, so considering there is none now.
It's all plus?
Yes. It would be all plus, correct.
What is the, the number?
Yes, the amount, and that's something that we could provide for you, um, when we get a little bit more detailed information.
I can confirm that number with Deb after this, too.
Generally speaking, uh, not this necessarily that applies to this or exactly the same, but if it's, uh, X, let's say $40 million to build in a commercial, typically what percentage of that ultimately becomes that tax valuation on the books?
That I don't know. Do you have any ideas?
Yeah, Councilmember Keely, I don't know exactly. It is usually less, though, than the construction value. You're absolutely correct, so.
This is at half or three-quarters or something like that?
I, I wouldn't even want to speculate.
Okay.
Because I'd be wrong.
It's less than that, but it's, less than 40, but it's greater than, you know, what's there today, right?
I, I can tell you, $2 million building in the heart of the city is about $80,000.
$200,000, that's a pretty, I mean, that's, it's going to be a substantial boost to our tax revenue as, as new tax dollars.
Right, and I may have an extra zero, so I, I'm going to, I'm going to confirm with Deb the, the valuation.
Councilmember Keely, what we can do is, um, get the information from, um, Kendra and then get some information on a typical valuation that we have right now. It wouldn't be new construction. And then send out a follow-up email to council, just so you have the information.
That would be, yeah, that would be very helpful. I would appreciate that. Um, actually, we will have Michelle read in, um, read some comments from our mayor. She sent a note, so we'll have that read, and then we'll have more questions after that.
That's great, I got a few more comments.
Perfect.
We can do it after that.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Mayor Couch sends these remarks. Mr. Brian Farrell and Mr. Darren Lazon have previously met with council members and with me. I asked Ms. Hardy for staff to be present with me at this meeting, and Ms. Garros was also there. My meeting with Mr. Farrell and Mr. Lazon was Friday, July 6th, uh, here at City Hall. In the spirit of transparency, my remarks this evening were also expressed to Mr. Farrell and his colleague. First, after listening to Mr. Lazon's presentation of the project, I thank them for the project and for executing a purchase agreement to purchase the land and to build an active senior project. These two actions and this new proposal is new and an improvement. It will put the land into the tax rolls and build an active senior facility. Mr. Farrell and Mr. Lazon talked about the necessary drainage and utility easements for the project. They reported, and Ms. Garros confirmed, that Mr. Farrell has placed funds into escrow for our legal counsel to do the research into the restrictions on the park due to how the city acquired the land for public use. They also talked about the trail system that goes into the city's park. I told Mr. Farrell and Mr. Lazon that I was pleased that they are paying for the research that is necessary to determine whether they can pull the utilities for their project through the city's property, an asset that belongs to the residents and businesses of Burnsville. We, the elected officials, are charged by the people to be ethical and good stewards of their assets. I could not support using the public's assets for their profitable gains. There is another path for their drainage and utility easements. It may cost a little bit more, but it is the cost of doing business, and from my perspective, their gain cannot be at the expense of the people and businesses of Burnsville. We, the city, have never allowed private utilities to be pulled through our park system. This is a slippery slope and one that can prove to be expensive long-term if there are breaks in the system on public land. But let's see what the findings are from the research. I also objected to a trail system that is defined as an amenity of the project using the people's park. This trail system is private with no public access. Again, there is another slippery slope. We have never allowed private development to use the city's park system as their private amenity. So this has many problems, such as who takes care of the trail system. If there is an accident on the trail system, the liability will fall on the city because it is the people's asset. The trail system is a nice amenity to sell their product, but again, not on public property and at the expense of the people and businesses of Burnsville. I applaud our staff for working collaborati- collaboratively with Mr. Farrell and his team. I recommend that Mr. Farrell work through all the issues that have been identified in the background. Staff and Mr. Farrell are asking for direction. I have suggested to Mr. Farrell to wait before they file their application until the research is done on the land title on the park and the use of the park for private utilities. It would not be financially feasible for his investor team and development team to proceed until the research is done.
You had other questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. A couple other points. Is, is the church currently on the city sewer and water?
No.
They said it, they said they had a septic.
She did cover that, okay. So it's.
They're in, uh, public water, so for whatever reason, we had a water main installed at Maple Island, but didn't have sewer installed at the same time.
Oh, gotcha. So they'll, if this project were to go through, they would come on city sewer?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And then, uh, stormwater runoff, uh, currently?
Currently, there isn't, um, there really isn't any.
There's a lot of land to catch it as it rolls off, but.
Exactly, so there is, yeah, there is stormwater, you're going off, but it's not being managed at all.
Gotcha.
Um, it would be, uh, completely managed based on our current ordinances with this development.
Whereas it might not be a huge issue due to what's there and, and how much woods and, uh, ground to absorb all that runoff. Um, it is going to, at least, uh, if this project were to move forward, it's going to improve to be, to standards that we would prefer.
Yes.
Okay, fair to say. The, Ms. Faulkner, this, I don't know if, this is a question you'd have off the top of your head, and it's, uh, when the Fitzpatrick apartment complex was built, we walked that trail on across town east, and part of the trail runs, it seemingly runs all along the Fitzpatrick's land, but it could actually be just on the city's land, because I don't know where the, I didn't look at the G I S, but I wonder if, when they built that apartment complex, if they installed that and then, uh, turned it over to the city, for instance, uh, to, for us to maintain, but gave it to the city, put it that way.
Councilmember Keely, I've been here a long time, but not that long, so. Yes. Again, we can do the follow-up research and put that in your email. I don't know, we certainly can find out.
Gotcha.
What happened there?
Well, just to conclude, I would agree, I think, and I appreciate the, the applicant looking to add trail system, and I would, uh, prefer that that trail system be open to the public, so then all the folks in that area that, that are using the trail that goes around the lake could also access these additional trails, um, along with the, uh, the residents of this, of this product. So, so for me, it only comes down to the question, the legal question on the utilities cutting across, uh, the parkland. Generally speaking, uh, you know, there's six or seven really good pluses on this project with, um, you know, the concern for the utility lines and a concern for view, just making sure that we preserve that end of the, uh, the lake as to what it has been. And if, if they can achieve that and, and the legal question is answered, I think this is a wonderful project to bring on the tax rolls and, and, uh, in addition, I, you know, there, this is a unique, unique location immediately. It's also a unique viewpoint. The rooftop deck overlooking the lake is awesome. Overlooking or underlooking Buck Hill is equally great, uh, in the summer and especially in the winter. Uh, so it's, it's, uh, it's like having some of our townhomes that are next to Buck Hill, only across the highway, and, you know, with, with views both directions. And with the elevation, there's a decent view to the north as well and south. So it's, it's really an awesome location for a project like this, and thank you.
Um, I, I kind of look at this project and I go, you're getting this church off the septic, which will fail someday, because all septic's eventually do, I see it all the time. Uh, we're bringing a very large project onto the tax rolls that are no longer on the tax rolls. We're mitigating the runoff that, that goes into that lake that we spend a lot of money on every year, just to try and keep clean for the residents. Also, they have a nice lake, so that's really going to help mitigate all that. Uh, the question, I believe, is the legal question. Uh, I'm not as concerned about the sewer. We have pipelines going through our parks right now. We're going to tear up the Burnsville Parkway here in another week to fix one of those pipelines. That's what we do in the city. That's, we handle infrastructure problems. That's what our job is. And if, I, I'm not in favor of increasing anybody's cost to do business with us in the city of Burnsville, especially when they're bringing us in a product that we have a, a need for. We don't have this type of housing in the city of Burnsville, and we have seniors that are downsizing, looking to stay here, and right now, they're not staying, they're moving because they don't have the apartments they want to live in. That's a nice place to live, and it's in a, it's a great setting. I, I don't see where it's going to take over the entire side of that lake. It's, uh, I think it's a, it's a win-win for, for everybody on this. And I would be supportive of it if the, if the legal is good for us to do it, then let's get it done.
Other comments or questions?
Well, if I, again, I, I'm leaning, uh, towards, uh, the mayor and I don't always agree on a lot of stu-, uh, a lot of things, but I agree with her, uh, as to my deep concern about, uh, going over private property with, uh, as is proposed, I certainly would be for it. If it would do the, uh, uh, go through the street and do it in that direction, I'd be totally for it, but.
Okay. I, I think what we're hearing is, um, council is in favor of continuing to look forward on this project. We do have a legal question that we, actually two, legal questions that we need to clear up, um, both on the trails and on the, um, infrastructure lines. Uh, so we do need to investigate those, and then, then we find out if that's even a moot point for further discussion on whether that's something we wish to see or not see. I, I don't feel that we're even to that point yet. Um, but if we get to that point, it looks like we will have further discussion on if that's something we wish to go forward on or not. Um, I am hearing, uh, some interest in the tr- in the trails, but with caveats. Um, one of them being perhaps public access rather than strictly private access, those types of things. Also liability questions and, um, maintenance questions on those. And if, even if this is done and it's turned over to the city, uh, is, what does that cost to the city then to maintain that? Uh, so those are, so we have a lot of questions, but overall, I'm sensing everyone wishes to move forward with this, and the direction is more investigatory. Did you have a question, Ryan? Okay. Is that clear direction?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm very excited, um, about this project. I see a lot of really good, exciting things happening with this. Um, and, and I think you're making just a stunning use of that site. You know, this is a very well-thought-out, developed plan. Um, and I think it's also very beneficial to the church as well. Um, so it, it looks very exciting, and it looks like it's a win for the church and for the city and also for the surrounding community. So, very exciting. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, so we will go to item three, which is our Phase One Facilities Project Report Closeout. Ah, so Garrett Beck, who is with our Parks, Recs and Facilities Director, is presenting.
She's kind of where he was at when I was there. Thank you very much, we appreciate, uh, your time and attention and the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope we're not interrupting too much.
No, it must have been the church. It was the church.
I thought they were being awful quiet, and I thought, must be the church.
All right, good evening, um, Acting Madam Mayor and council members. So we're going to kick off tonight. Um, you get to hear from me on a couple of different presentations, and then I'll sit with, uh, J.J. Ryan for our third presentation. So, uh, we're going to start off with our Phase One Facility Project Report. Um, so, in 2014, uh, I actually kicked off an RFP for a space study analysis for four of our older facilities in our community. Um, and so what I'd like to do here this evening is kind of take us through the, the history of where we've been, uh, talk about the Phase One Facility Project, uh, that we just have, um, entered into and been a part of for the last 12 months, um, and look at how we've collaborated, um, as a city to get that project completed, how we've been transparent and communicated, uh, what's been going on with that project, um, go through some of the project challenges that we've had, um, over the last year, and, um, finish with what our remaining challenges are currently, and, uh, hopefully kind of talk about how we're going to close the project out and, and move on to the next thing. So, uh, as I mentioned, in 2014, we started a, a, a space study analysis, and that, um, analysis was completed and shared with council in February of 2015. Um, at that time, uh, we kind of identified short-term, midterm, and long-term priorities for the city. And in the short term, as you can see here, um, there was a need to do some remodeling, renovating, and expanding of our city hall and police facilities. Um, we were looking at a covered vehicle storage facility for our police first responders. Uh, we were taking a look at, um, our fire station, which had reached its, uh, end of life essentially, and, and trying to come up with some schematic designs on what that might look like for, uh, possibly a midterm, uh, project, and then ultimately some conceptual design and cost estimating for our city garage. Um, the purpose of the Phase One project that we have going on right now is, uh, first and foremost, to improve our public safety. Um, we also wanted to make sure that we addressed American with Disabilities Accessibility. Obviously, we're the 30-year-old building. Uh, it was built to those standards originally, but things have changed over the years. Um, and then we wanted to, uh, improve our operational efficiencies and how things were laid out in our police department and whatnot, based on how we're doing business now. And then finally, um, improving our visitor experience, both, um, if visitors are here coming into City Hall, uh, for business purposes, for meetings, um, uh, but also for facility rentals, um, whether it was in our community room or in our meeting spaces upstairs. This project was a major undertaking, to say the least. Um, we had a core project team that was, um, made up of individuals across all our different departments. Uh, that group set our guiding principles for the project, um, and, and those principles, we believe, represented truly what the, the city of Burnsville's values are. Uh, this group was the ambassadors for this pro- this project. This group was the ambassadors for this project. It's not every day that you do a relocation of a 24/7 public safety operation for a 12-month period of time. And so those folks championed this project. It kept our staff morale up. It helped us to endure the challenges and to go above and beyond the call of duty when those situations arose that called for that. This was a very forward-thinking group. I mean, we were constantly asking, how do we educate and how do we engage our staff, our city council members, and our public to make sure that they had the information they needed to support the project and to know what was going on to produce a successful project in the end. This group also was responsible for monitoring our project's success, helping us to stay on time, and as those challenges came up, helping us to maneuver through them and come up with a solution that was productive for the city. So this project wasn't just a functional change that we had to deal with. We had a cultural change as well. Our police patrol operated for 10 months in close quarters with our Parks and Public Works employees at our maintenance facility. Our rec department reevaluated how we deliver services to our community and made space for our police reception group and for interview rooms in the front. Our lower level was shut down, and that's where we housed our Police Administration Department. For almost a year, we had guests coming into City Hall and police guests coming in all in the same area, and we were serving people for both reasons in a very small space. I'd be mistaken not to mention that our IT department was able to, led by Tom Venables, they worked with our core team and our police department to relocate a 24/7 police operation. And we did not miss a beat to the service our community. We did it all in-house, and that saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to do it within our own facilities and our own infrastructure. And then I'd also be mistaken not to mention how the chief partnered with our local, with other local law enforcement agencies to be able to deliver services that we normally provide by sharing spaces with them and leaning on them to help us through this time. So the partnerships were amazing, and it was truly a group effort to get through that. Yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember Keely.
Sorry. I was talking softly. That statement, I guess it might have been mentioned before in conversations, one-on-ones, but it never really resonated like it just did. You pointed out that our IT director essentially saved the city taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, but really the magnitude of what he orchestrated in moving a 24/7 PD off-site to another location because there's so much communication and technology involved in all of that, that's a Community Builder Award nomination, if I've ever heard one, or maybe some other sort of recognition. But, you know, of all the aspects of this project that were so big, the construction, right, was big. But that was one of those things where, you know, when you have to operate 24/7 and it's emergency services that have to continue, I think Mr. Venables deserves an extra pat on the back. And maybe it's just his vocal recognition now, but I think that's a big part. I guess I never really extrapolated the severity and the significance of that in previous conversations when we're just sort of going over the scope of this whole project because we get so engulfed in the construction part and, you know, the additions and the renovations. But, so, congratulations to Mr. Venables and, you know, to you and the whole team for the project. It's a great, that one was one that just got by me. I don't remember that being called out the way you did, and so I appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Keely. I'm comfortable in saying that our core team had a guiding principle that we really wanted to be transparent and we wanted to engage people, as I mentioned before. Before the project began, we had the public open house where we invited people from the community in to see what it was that we were hoping to accomplish. I will share that during that time, we had an individual come in and asked us about our ADA plans for the main level restroom. And we actually incorporated the feedback from that open house into one of the decisions that we made in the main level restroom. So those are just examples of how we were intentional of trying to be transparent and straightforward. Marty and his communication team did an amazing job through the Burnsville Bulletin and our social media to try to keep people as up-to-date as possible as significant milestones were being accomplished. Internally, we had a website called Construction Junction that allowed staff to anonymously ask at any time questions about things that were going on. It allowed them to keep up with the progress of the project. And again, just, you know, people don't necessarily feel comfortable sharing a concern about noise or whatever, and that gave them a chance to do it either coming into my office or doing it through that process to try to make sure that we made this as comfortable of a process for everyone as possible. And then we wrapped it up with that grand opening that we had during I Love Burnsville Week, which allowed our residents to come in, tour the building, and really see what had been accomplished over the past year. No project of this magnitude is not going to have project challenges, and as much as I'd like to say we were the exception, we were definitely not. When you do a remodel or renovation versus new construction, you almost always will experience additional challenges. This was definitely the case for us. We started out with our project bids. You may recall, we were a million dollars over budget when the project bids came in. We opted at that time that, to move forward and accept those bids, knowing that we would try to value engineer down. We did that with the idea that if we were to delay this project and try to bid it later, that it would only cost us more money. So that was the first intentional thing that we did to try to keep this moving forward. We did value engineer down to about $125,000 over, but we never got below that. You may recall that our SWAT garage, because of the slope of the garage extending out up to Civic Center, was a challenge, and so we had to excavate underneath the building. That created some additional costs related to that. We knew that we had some type of leak in the City Hall police area. We did not know the magnitude of the leak. So as they started to peel back dirt and whatnot from the building, we were able to determine what that was and had to make a decision to repair that at that time. There was some interest in our planning department that we redo our City Hall front entry to have it match the police front entry, which had more of a modern look, and that added some cost to the project. As-bills don't always show exactly where things are, and we came across our utilities being in the front of the building and needing to be relocated. Some things that maybe weren't really thought about in the planning process is that we had new irrigation going in as part of this project, but we also had our second or third oldest irrigation system here on Civic Center property. So tying in new irrigation into a 30-plus-year-old system really didn't make a lot of sense, and there was going to be future challenges with that. Likewise, very similar was our building security. Tom had talked about a need to be replacing that as well. And then in the middle of the project, we made a decision, as you know, the front entry had to be shut down, and we needed all of the people coming to police and City Hall to possibly be using the hallway off the council chambers here. And so we delayed some work and adjusted some things for a public safety standpoint and for visitor convenience to try to do that, and that did add cost to the project as well. So again, just some, those are some pretty significant things that are not $1,000, $5,000 things, but had pretty big price tags associated with each of them. Remaining challenges, I'd love to say we're done with the project, but we are not. You always have a punch list when you have projects like this where contractors come in, they do the job, they're on their way to the next thing, and things didn't go exactly the way you hoped it would. It can be damaged ceiling tiles. We had motion sensors, door hardware in our police wing that we're bringing people back for. City Hall had a bi-fold door handles being installed wrong. We had a missing exit sign. You've probably noticed the irrigation leak that we had out in the small parking lot. Our porous pavers need to be vacuumed out and whatnot, so they work properly. We have trees that didn't survive. So, I mean, those are punch list-type things that we're still working through and will hope to accomplish over the next couple of months. We also had an issue that we're working with in police that is just a design issue related to sound and whatnot. And so we started with adding more insulation in the ceiling and doing things around the door frame and trying to see if that mitigated the problem. We are moving towards most likely some more complicated issues to ultimately try to get this solved and working with Wold and Kraus Anderson on that. So as far as closing out the project here, I mentioned the punch list items and the remaining challenge with the sound and whatnot. We also needed to add the facility commissioning. When you add the new HVAC system and all this, it made sense to commission both buildings together so they operate properly. We did bring that item to council a few months ago and are working with that contractor to accomplish the commissioning process. In the end, as I mentioned, we have project billings and invoices that I'm hoping will be completed through the month of August into early September, and that kind of takes us to the project budget status. I guess I'm here tonight to tell you that our core team worked tirelessly to try to bring this project in on budget. We have value engineered from the very beginning. We eliminated a few things that we had planned to do. We did everything, asked difficult questions, did whatever we could to try to get this on budget. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, we did not make it there. I can tell you that also at the end of the day, we made decisions, especially if you think about that list that I shared, rather than to come in right on budget or under budget and then have to spend more money a year from now or two years from now to rip up the front of City Hall to take care of a leak that we could have taken care of now, that ultimately put us over budget. And that number right now is tracking right in that $250,000 range. I know that we've been tried, we've been transparent and kept council aware of those challenges, but at the end of the day, that's where we're at right now. So I will leave it at that and kind of entertain any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Question on the grading. Roughly, what was the cost of mitigating the drainage and grading surprise that came a little after the initial planning and estimating was done?
Councilmember Keely, are you talking about the relocation of the SWAT garage down below or the...
Which was part, that ultimately became part of the mitigation of, because of the drain problem, flooding, water drainage, et cetera.
Exactly.
Runoff.
Wold shared a number of about $500,000 when we first started talking about that. And at the end of the day, we never asked him to pinpoint it, but it was a very significant number that ultimately went on to the project in the end.
Right. So what dollar amount contingency was in the initial budget?
$450,000.
So basically, from the get-go, you were a 50 grand in the hole. Your entire contingency's gone. Now you have to deal with this half-million-dollar surprise because it wasn't planned, it wasn't part of the deal, and we go through the process, we allocate the money and the planning, and then we jump into it and then the design. And I think early on, it was discovered that we got a problem here, right? Which, you know, it is what it is. So I think it's really, as a project manager, on a lot of things over the last many, many years, that's not something you want to have to deal with. But the reality is, whether it's in the private sector or public sector, if you're going to chew your entire contingency budget up on one surprise issue, you're really cheating the entire rest of the project. And value engineering is a great way of saying cuts and changes and cheaper do-whathouts and, you know. And so ultimately, did the, did it, I admire the city staff for getting down to 250 because you were a million. That was half of the overage, was just that, that situation with drainage and mitigation and having to move the SWAT garage. You know, then there was other things that come along. And the other things that come along was why you had a contingency budget, right? That would have been handled by your contingency. So I think it's, you know, in retrospect, I wish we would have given another half a million to the project way back at the beginning and allowed you to have that contingency fund to deal with all the other surprises because there's always going to be a lot of them. And usually the lunch, the list is very long, and you hope they don't all that up to more than what your contingency set aside. And I think the contingency budget was a little tight, but doable, but not when you got, you know, when you have, you know, all but 50 grand taken away right off the bat, right? So congratulations on managing that the best you could.
Thank you.
So you had, the 450,000 contingency was already in your budget?
Correct.
So at the end of the day, on this $13 million project, is that what it turned out? We ended up going about 250,000 over what we had budgeted for?
That is correct.
That's a pretty good percentage when you look at, when I look at building with developers around town. That's a really good percentage.
Any other comments? Well, I will tell you that while people were very interested in the actual construction, and that is the ooh-ah, pretty and wonderful and functionality, and I know people are extremely pleased with their new work environment, which is also, you know, spectacular for being able to maintain your really good people staying with you, having a nice work environment. It was a joy watching how staff worked together to surmount the challenges that they faced and also to see them in not the best work environment at the moment, but understanding that that was very temporary and that good things were ahead for them. And, you know, they just needed to, you know, hang in there, do the best they could, and kind of adapt and improvise on that. So, I mean, that really was a joy to watch that. And that's when you know you have really good teams in place, is when they're placed in those types of extended stressful situations. So that was wonderful to see. And, you know, I would also like to take a moment to thank our former city manager, Heather Johnston, for her assistance and management through this project as well. I know she kept a very close eye on the financials and how things were going and the schedule and how to shift things around. And that was in addition to her regular duties as well. And she handled that with professionalism and grace. So I just want to also give her a thank you for that as well. But thank you very much for your report, and thanks to all of our city staff on this. It is a wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to item number four, which is our solar garden participation. And you are still in the hot seat.
There's a giant bug around here.
A giant what? Oh. Jump. We'll let the bug in.
I know.
Get the bugs out.
All right, I'm back. So February of 2016, the city opted to take the plunge into community solar gardens. And at that time, I promised you that about 18 months later, I'd be returning to you to share an update of kind of what that experience has been and what it means to the city. So that's the purpose of the presentation tonight. We'll do a quick history of what transpired prior to us getting into solar gardens. I'll talk to you about how we implemented that plan, and then I'll close with sharing what our results have been to date. So our interest in solar gardens actually started about four years ago. Staff was keeping tabs on a nationwide trend of community solar gardens. And at that time, there was some movement into Minnesota. movement into Minnesota, but most of it had been on the West Coast. And so, we kind of decided at that time to kind of see how this played out. Along came 2015, and the metropolitan area was kind of flooded with a large number of community solar garden providers. And all of us, with this being kind of a new concept and being unfamiliar, a lot of us welcomed the idea that the Met Council would leave a, lead a government collaborative and do an RFP and bring all of these groups together for the most part. And then, if you opted into that, they would do a lottery system and kind of pair you up with some different companies that they stood behind, and then give you the opportunity to then choose to participate or not participate in community solar gardens. After a long review process, we ended up getting paired with two different companies. Solarstone, which ultimately has transferred our gardens to NRG, was one of the groups that we, out of the three, that we were matched up with. We reviewed their terms of the contract, and out of the three companies, they were the one that provided the least amount of risk to the city and the best terms over the length of the 25-year contract. At the same time, I was contacted by Oakleaf Energy Partners. They were already under construction on two properties that the Met Council was involved in. One was at the Empire Waste Water Treatment Center, and the other was at the Egan landfill site. And their terms were far and above better than any of the other proposals that we had. So, what we did is we brought the package to council for consideration. We had about 8 million, in 2015, we had about 8 million kilowatts per hour in the XL energy contra, or in the usage area. And at the time, we opted to put 50% of our energy use from XL into the community solar gardens that were represented by Solarstone and Oakleaf. So, we have 12 different contracts out there for each of the gardens with those two companies. 10 of them are split between Webster and Northfield, and the other two are at the locations I mentioned earlier. So, once we received that blessing in 2016, in February, to move forward, we worked to get the contracts in place. And the idea at that time is that, once each of those companies, not really Oakleaf, because they, we were filling out one of their loc, or two of their locations, but Solarstone was working with other communities. And once they had sold all of their, their gardens, they would then begin their construction, which was planned for fall of 2016, with the idea that they would have them completed and operational by January of 2017. And that's kind of where we said we'd have 18 months of, of opportunity to review what that situation looked like and come back to you. So, the projections for the city at that time, based on the gardens that we had secured, is that for the first two years, we would see an expense of paying $12,000 more total over two years for our energy than if we didn't go into community gardens. But over the course of the 25 years, assuming a 2.5% energy increase, that the long-term savings would be 2.75 million dollars. So, that was, that was the, the details of why we got into community gardens in the first place. So, as we looked at our gardens, Solarstone had some connectivity challenges right off the bat. They were not up and operational on January 1st as they thought they might be. And instead, we, they only had three of our 10 gardens operational by July of 2017. Right at the end of the year, they ended up getting the other seven on. So, as you'll see, we have a very small sample of what the, what our largest amount of energy is producing at our gardens in the 10 Solarstone locations. Oakleaf was ahead in their project already, and they had no connectivity issues, and their gardens were fully operational for us in January of 2017. So, as I mentioned, our projections and the model that we were going off of showed that we were going to lose $12,000 in the first two years. Through the first two years, the, the two Oakleaf Energy locations have saved us $7,353. And in the limited time that the Solarstone gardens have been up and running, they have saved us $2,585. So, over the course of the last 15 months, we're about $10,000 to the good instead of being the $12,000 to the negative. So, at this point, I'd say it's been a successful decision and a process for us. I am regularly contacted by community solar garden providers, asking if the city has an interest in putting more of their XL energy into community solar gardens. My response has been the same to all of them, and is that is that there would be a presentation here in July that council would have a chance to get an update on what it's meant up to this point, and then could provide direction if there was an interest in considering additional participation in gardens above and beyond what we've already done.
Just to clarify, is the almost $10,000 in the green, is that net?
That is net. That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keeler?
Thank you. Could you refresh my memory, our memory on the planned $12,000 loss in the first two years? There was some initial, called startup costs, for lack of a better word.
Correct. So, basically, the way the, the bill credits worked is we were starting with the Solarstone contracts. We were starting at a per kilowatt hour cost. And then, there was going to be a 1% annual increase on the contract. And because we were starting at a certain level, and then with that 1% increase, it wasn't going to catch up to that projected 2.5% energy increase per year. So, our production wasn't going to be working at a level to match that. But as energy costs increased, our bill credit and the 1% increase wouldn't be increasing as quickly as energy would be. So, that's how we would catch up and start having savings after that. As it turns out, it, the model is off a little bit to our favor. So, that's, that's how we're in that situation.
So, we can make it a bigger favor if we go more?
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it likely going to continue like that?
Right. And, and so, that was always the big question is, you know, so, when we brought the presentation back in February, community solar garden providers have been going off of a model that over the last 30 to 40 years, energy has increased on an average of 4% per year. So, that's why the Met Council and the different groups said, all right, as we're evaluating this, we'll choose a model that has a 2.5% increase instead of a 4% increase. So, you can be more conservative in your, in your planning. And so, if energy does continue to increase, we're locked in at a lower rate. If for some reason, energy were to be cheaper, which history doesn't show that, but it is a gamble, then we could be in a different situation. So...
Follow. I passed, I emailed this to the council and Ms. Hardy. I passed down on 60 from Mankato, was heading, I think, through Madison Lake. And up on the horizon was these reflective, it was a solar farm, but we're looking, it just looked so strange out in the country to have a hillside that popped up straight ahead on the highway as the highway curved off dead ahead. It was this, this mound of shiny rows. And my wife and I were like, what in the heck is that? It just looked completely unexpected. And we got closer, I took a picture, because she was driving. And, and it was pretty amazing. It's the first one I've ever seen that close. And it's, you know, it's, it's like rows of grapes, grapevines, or rows of any kind of crop. It's rows of solar panels, just, you know, hundreds of them over this massive landscape. And, and the power lines you can see in this picture up on the left side, you can see the power grid poles coming up and exiting it. It's pretty impressive. And so, you know, based on these results, we'd be inclined to expand on that. I certainly would be. I mean, I think it's, it's working well. And visually, it's a lot more appealing than wind farms. The wind, the propeller farms are not necessarily the, not, they're not as aesthetically appealing as this. And I don't know what the difference in power generation is from a, a wind farm to a, oh, somebody's showing, look at that. Let me just line that up and zoom in a little. There you go. So, it's, it's pretty incredible. So, I don't know what the difference is with the wind farms, but these definitely, you know, and they could do a lot to screen around where you wouldn't even see them. I mean, if they did some screening around the outer edges, you wouldn't even know that was there.
They don't even kill birds?
They don't kill birds. They don't whistle and howl in the wind when they're spinning really fast. Or whine, I guess. The engines on the, the wind turbines are pretty loud, from what I understand. Extremely intrusive to neighboring properties.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the update on that. Appreciate it. Okay, and we'll go to item number five, our update on Planning Commission Annual Solar Ordinance Review. So, we're still with solar, but we're going to welcome Deb Garros back, our city planner.
Deb dragged me up here. I wasn't planning on coming up.
Ah. And so, we also have Commissioner Vince Workman joining us. You guys did the heavy lifting on this. Appreciate it.
I had a heavy lifting.
Yes, we have. Repeated, repeated heavy lifting. Okay, thank you very much.
We'll try not to send it back this time.
Thank you, Adam Mayor and council members. The, just a brief, quick history of the solar ordinance. Actually, we were here a couple of years ago, right behind Garrett, doing the same thing with the ordinance. So, it was kind of fitting that here we are again. The ordinance was adopted in March of 2016, so it's been in effect for a couple of years now. Basically, just a quick review is the, the ordinance was put together so that we allow solar as a permitted accessory use. It is set up so that if you have building integrated solar, that there is very little that's required in terms of performance standards and permitting. It's, really, they wanted to, the Planning Commission wanted to take advantage of the, you know, the changing technologies. It's also been an annual work plan item on the Planning Commission's work plan. Because technology is changing so much, they wanted to make sure that the ordinance remained current. So, we, we've reviewed that. The first year, they did the review, they didn't find the need to change the ordinance. This year, we had a little bit of additional input and information to provide to them, and they are suggesting a change that they would like to see. The last, the first meeting we had was on March 26th. We had a presentation by Brian Ross of Great Plains Institute. He had his own firm a number of years ago and worked with the city as consultant on our first sustainability plan back in 2009. Very knowledgeable about solar. He works with Deed and Department of Commerce, and then also is really the key person out there that has worked with communities and the state in terms of ordinance development and the types of regulations and standards to put into play to accommodate and to work with the solar, solar energy. So, very, very, very good individual and speaker. And we also had a presentation by All Energy Solar, which they turn out to be the, one of the largest consultant companies, if you will, pulling permits for solar, primarily single-family residential. But they're a very large contractor and installer. Some of the issues that were talked about with, with both individuals, and we also had some residents that spoke as well. But for All Energy Solar, what they indicated is that the architectural, some of the architectural standards that we have in the ordinance are cost prohibitive, in their opinion. And that would be the, kind of the reliance on the building integrated and some of the newer technologies that are coming out with Tesla and whatnot for solar shingles and roofing and those kinds of things. They had also indicated, and we have found this also, is that when we put the ordinance together, there was a strong emphasis on utilizing triangular shaped panels, which a lot of communities in the United States have done, East and West Coast, the ones that were more forward into solar than we are. However, the major company that produced those has discontinued those. So, some of our assumptions then are different at this point in time. Mr. Ross indicated that of the solar ordinances that he has worked on, primarily in the metro area, but also in the state, that we have more comprehensive aesthetic standards in the Burnsville ordinance than he has found in other ordinances. Not that that is a good or bad thing. Every community has their own objectives that they want to attain, and that's just where we stand in terms of purely looking at how ordinance compares to others. And, let's see here. The major issue that we have run into is with really one element of the ordinance. And that is that the panels should be uniform, and the slope and proportions of the array itself should match the shape and proportions of the roof wall. And where that has been an issue is depending on the type of roof style a homeowner has, and it's primarily single-family residential that's been affected. The commercial permits, beautiful. They're working beautifully. I've had no issues in quite a lot of installations and no issues whatsoever. The issue here is dependent upon the roof style, and because the triangular panels aren't readily available, meeting shape and proportion is very difficult to do, if, if at all, depending on if you can find those panels. And what they had also indicated, and again, this is the solar contractor, All Energy Solar, is that the opportunity that the ordinance provides, then if you do have a hip roof or need something, is to go through a conditional use permit. But that process is expensive, and it takes 60 to 90 days. And in their opinion, just didn't feel that that was appropriate, that just based on a roof style issue, that you had to go through this process. So, that's what they had indicated. Then on June 25th, we brought back additional information to the Planning Commission that they wanted to see. We reported back on the number of solar permits that have been issued since the ordinance was put into effect, and there have been 14, nine for single-family and five commercial permits. We have gone through two conditional use permits for different style roofs, both of which the council approved. But they, they just were additional reviews required just because of the shape and proportion provision of the ordinance. We looked at and provided information, there are six different contractors that have done these installations over the past couple of years. And we also provided a comparison of our ordinance with the adjacent cities that we have, and then also with the city of Woodbury's ordinance, because we had heard that Woodbury also had aesthetic standards in their ordinance. So, we took a look at that. And I'm not going to go through this, but just to let you know, in the second column is Burnsville's ordinance. And this is a comparison of aesthetic standards. So, we've got three pages here, and you can just see by looking at this quickly that we have much more comprehensive and many more aesthetic standards than the other communities combined. And if you want to go through them individually, we can do that, but I didn't think so. So, that's the short and sweet. The Planning Commission, then, after reviewing all of this information and listening to what the consultants had to say and what they heard from the residents affected and also All Energy Solar, is that they believe that we should remove that shape and proportion standard from the ordinance. And then, they suggest adding provisions that really outline kind of our objectives, what we would like to see, making it a situation. And what we have described above is what was prevented or presented to Planning Commission. Basically, that if the panel system is, or if the solar system is visible from the public right-of-way, then we look at trying to minimize the visual impact from street level to the extent possible without reducing their efficiency. And this is a very common standard in a lot of ordinances. It's, I think what... It's um, I think what we're showing and what we would like to do is to give a little bit of uh information on kind of what we would like to see. So, um, basically, it's set up so that um to try to group panels and try to form, you know, regular um squares or rectangular arrays, um try to place panels to avoid gaps between the arrays and, and the individual panels. Um, orient panels in the same direction. Um, and the one that was added um from the Planning Commission is to have the frame color match or blend with the solar panel color. Um, we have had some testimony that that is um, that is going to be um difficult. Um, and that's from the uh All Energy Solar, but that is uh part of the recommendation from uh Planning Commission. And then lastly, um, if you need to, because of gables or hip roof or those types of things, again, to the, allow this with a standard building permit, um but um really try to meet those other objectives first. And then if not, then you can do uh basically the staggered type panels. So, that is the recommendation uh from Planning Commission on this. And I think at this point, we just wanted to provide uh the input to council and uh get your input. And uh depending on what you would like to do, we would return to Planning Commission with a draft ordinance and then a public hearing in which uh the public would be notified. And we also have kept the same individuals notified of the process um throughout this year. So they, uh, there's probably about ten different individuals that have expressed an interest, so. Um, and we will continue uh when we anticipating if we do have a public hearing for a draft, that we would also include those folks. So they can be involved from beginning to end.
Okay.
Mr. Workman, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, well, it took a little while um to figure out what we were doing wrong. Before we could figure out how to do it right. Cause when you have an ordinance, um, people are gonna, there's things we didn't anticipate seeing that obviously came up that you are aware of, um, which is why we have ended with what we have here tonight. Um, and these points here, Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, are not requirements, but it's what the preferred method is.
Yes.
So, if somebody comes in, we're not saying you must do these things, but we would like to see these things.
Kind of the goal or objective part of the, the ordinance, that's very common to see in the various zoning districts. You know, the objectives are this, this, and this, um rather than having uh hard and fast, you have to do it this way.
So if someone's frame color does not match the solar panel?
It doesn't match the solar.
It's not required to match.
It's a suggestion?
More so, yes.
Would this, would this eliminate the need for a CUP so administrably a permit can just be issued and they can do their thing?
We don't want the ordinance to be a hindrance to the spirit of what people are trying to do.
Got it. Uh, it, and thank you very much for the work that you've done. And, and I know you've had to, like, get it in front of you a couple of times, and, and I really appreciate that. Seeing the list of what Burnsville re- you know, requires and wants on aesthetics versus other cities is dismaying. Um, we cannot tout ourselves as a green city that we do all the time. When we show we have a level of hostility towards things that would allow people to be more green. I do not place that on the Planning Commission. This is just a comment in general. Um, I think we're stepping in the right direction. I don't think we're there. Um, but I do appreciate that. And while I do understand that these are suggestions, such as the frame colors to match or blend in with the solar panel, why would we even suggest that to someone when that's probably not something they can even do? I mean, there's like one of those things, like in the military, you know, you don't, you don't give commands that you know people can't and will not follow. Like, that's just a really good way for people to then look at everything else and say, eh, not doing it, right? So, even though these are suggestions, wouldn't a better way to go would be for our suggestions to be something that people could readily comply with and understand the use for. That's my thought on it. But I would like this, to open this up to my other city council members and their thoughts on this.
I will mention before you guys speak that Brian at All Our Own Energy did have a comment about that specific piece. Um, kind of on his departure out, uh, last meeting we had, that that would be a unique to Burnsville item.
Yeah, I, I like the logic of that, meaning that why, I mean, either we have a, a set of rules that apply or we don't. And if we're going to, and, and having suggestions, to me, is meaningless. Uh, so if that's where we land, then, then I believe we should have limited requirements, whatever they may be.
Yeah.
And not suggestions. If we're not gonna, if those are rules, then I would do away with it.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Well, could we get some clear definition on um what you're suggesting? I agree with you because the, the, the product doesn't come but in a few select colors for frame. It's not like Sherwin-Williams and you can pick a color. It's made in however many, and if that happens to match your house, great. If it doesn't, well, you know, this is what we offer, right? So I think um the color match is problematic. Um, the other ones, like orienting them in the same direction, avoid gaps, you know, form squares or rectangles. Some of that seems commonsensical, cause you have a section of roof and you're just gonna, you know, lay them out there. You don't want them to look discombobulated. You don't want to make a, make a herringbone pattern out of them per se, but you might. So, uh, where do we go with those recommendations? I guess is my question, I just to give staff some clarity.
Right. So I think I'm hearing recommendation from you that either it's, it's a requirement or it's not a requirement.
Set some as a requirement, or if they're, if they're just suggestions, then I believe then there should be nothing.
Yep.
Because, so what if someone lists a suggestion? I can then put them in a pattern that I want to. To me, it's, it's PR and not reality. So reality is, either we have a cer- certain set of rules, uh minimal rules, and if we even, but no, anything that's a suggestion, from my standpoint, would not be, and it just, would not list it.
So, strike the suggestions. Strike the suggestions. Okay. I'm also looking at striking the suggestions. I, and I really do um like that we're no longer putting that requirement in for, like, the triangle pieces and, oh god, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for that. That's a very good thing. How are you feeling forward if we just strike the, strike the suggestions, since they are suggestions and they wouldn't be requirements?
Um, yeah, I'd like to flip that back to staff. And are we getting too far away from? Cause I'm, I'm looking through the background and seeing, you know, there's structured panels, and there's one on Lakota Lane. Is that near you? Uh, one thousand, or Lakota Lane, I know it's public, but I'm sure they don't appreciate. Maybe they want people to drive by and say, look at our panels. Um, they're all, they're all installed kind of the way you would expect them to be. But is that because we gave them some guidance? Or is that what they also wanted? They wanted them to look good and look like they were done the way they should be done, right?
I think they're gonna put the arrays up there as, are more efficient, the, the best way it will work for the homeowner.
And, and does that not even, maybe that comes from the vendors? Yeah, the, aren't the vendors actually saying, this is what you should do. Put them all together, get them on this spot.
Correct.
You know, not flop them all around, you know.
I'm sure the installer's not gonna have you, have them flop all over the place.
Yeah, it kind of doesn't make any sense.
Council members, actually, um, we have as staff, uh the Development Review Committee, have provided guidance um so that they do that. Um, otherwise, yeah, you can get them all over the place, um, different directions. And it's a matter of, again, what, what the goal is um of the city, if that's significant to you or not.
I still think homeowners, when they do remodel their houses and that, they do it for the resale value of the house and the aesthetics of the house. They want it to look nice, cause someday they are gonna sell it. And I don't think anyone intentionally is doing something that's gonna look bad for the city.
Yeah, these would be, um, usually are presented from the um contractor does that, because the homeowner doesn't know.
Exactly. And the contractor is attempting to lay them out with an eye to efficiency of the system so that they can draw the best and most power and consistent power from there, um, which I don't want to interfere with. If, if someone's gonna ha- you know, do that, and, and they're taking a step that we actually would like them to take, which is, you know, to, to live a greener life, I don't want to step in between that because I'm not an engineer. That's not my specialty. And I would rather leave that to the contractor whose specialty it is, rather than get overly hung up on how it looks versus how it performs.
And I'll summarize, uh, what I see Dan Gustafson's argument is, is that uh if, if somebody's going to do a stupid design, they will pay for it later when they try to sell their house or use it. So, the real market force is that people will apply, will, with their contractors, will use common sense presumptively and uh, uh choose a right design to make it more efficient. And if they don't, and their contractor screws up, then they'll hire a lawyer. The lawyer will sue the contractor and uh, and then redo it, see?
In the circle of life.
Always involves a lawyer.
I'm summarizing it, there's a market
Yes.
uh element to it, and that's why suggestions don't make any sense to me. Uh, if we, if, so.
Alright.
Then it should be the market.
Got it.
Well, first and foremost, um, I want to make sure that we are well-known for being very open and welcoming and, and, and people in houses and commercial buildings uh invest in solar. It's, it makes sense. It's, the cost has gotten to the point where the solar farms are popping up, more residents and buildings are looking uh towards solar. So, having no suggestions and a policy that is wide open, the wider the doors, the better, because I think the common sense will come into play. And if that will uh incent, or not incent per se with financial incentive, but just incent people to know that in Burnsville, you can put solar panels on your roof and tap into this, uh, this new energy source. Please line up uh and come on in and, cause we're welcoming you to do so. So in that spirit, I would agree with it.
Do you feel that you have direction?
Um, I feel that we do, Madam Mayor. Um, if you think it would be helpful, and if you like that a suggestion is only a suggestion, I mean, we can put together uh an informational brochure for residents for things to consider if you're doing solar, and here's the permits that you need.
I like that.
We can do something like that, but that's not in the ordinance. I understand where you're coming from.
I like that.
Correct.
It's very friendly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Things to consider, something like that.
That's very friendly.
So, maybe that's where we'll park them then, if you're okay with that, or what are their ideas?
I like that.
Suggest, the suggestions part.
That is a, a really good suggestion. I appreciate that. Yeah, it is.
Just one point of clarification. I think if we're gonna go that route, what I heard, I thought I heard consensus on not.
Color match. So that would be
Correct.
Strike, strike the color match piece out of the suggestion.
The frame, yeah.
Right. And, and have all of those lists of suggestions, those go to a brochure, that's no longer
Part of the ordinance.
Part of the ordinance.
Correct.
Kind of like when they said they didn't make frames for the hip roofs. Well, no, we have it in there. You can't get it.
Right. Is that, we're good now?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And thank you so much for Planning Commission on all the work you did on this.
I don't know what we're gonna talk about for the rest of the summer.
I, I know. Your favorite topic is gone. Okay, we'll move to item six, which is our community festival information. So we have happy, joyous information. Okay, so J.J. Ryan, who is our Rock and Facilities Superintendent, is presenting for us.
Good evening, Madam Acting Mayor, members of council. Uh, I'm here tonight to provide you with some information on the idea of a weekly community celebration. Uh, this topic is a follow-up from your uh all-day work session back in January. Um, to get us through this discussion, I've got a brief agenda. There's an event down in Rochester that we're gonna talk about. Uh, there are current events uh offered here in Burnsville. Their uh staff did some outreach and, and uh did a little talking to some community folks to find their level of interest. Um, we were also out scouting out a few possible locations for an event like this. And uh, based on some numbers from past events, we've also put together some estimated costs for um a, a one-day event or an event similar to this. Um, so the event down in Rochester is called Thursdays on First and Third Market and Music Festival. And uh, Madam Acting Mayor, judging from uh your hands raised, it must have been you that was down in Rochester that was able to witness this event, that maybe it sparked this and put this item on our agenda here today.
That is correct, yes. I worked in Rochester and also our other city councillor was able to experience this in Rochester as well.
Very good. So.
Gustavos, as you know.
Right. Uh, the event down in Rochester is organized by the Rochester Downtown Alliance. They are a mi- uh nonprofit group focused on uh creating a vibrant downtown Rochester area. Uh, the event is gonna take place in the summer from Thurs- Thurs- every Thursday from June seventh through August thirtieth. It runs from eleven AM till eight thirty PM. There are multiple stages, multiple vendors. Um, and it is uh brought altogether by the support and contributions from the Mayo Clinic of a hundred thousand dollars. And the City of Rochester also contributes a large amount of a hundred thousand dollars too, to help support the event. Uh, what I have found on uh their website is this layout, and uh it, it, as you can see, the, the colored boxes down the outsides of the streets or down the middle of the street, there are over a hundred and twenty-five vendors. These are food and crafts and uh arts and all kinds of things. There are also multiple stages that are a little harder to pick out. Uh, but there are multiple music stages set up um at various points uh throughout the, the fairgrounds or the festival grounds as well. Um, currently here in Burnsville, as you all know, we do have two legacy events that provide um music and uh vendor-type of, of activities. Uh, however, these events are just one-day or one-weekend annual events. They are not an ongoing uh weekly type of an event. Um, much like the uh Rochester Downtown Alliance, though, there is a group of volunteers uh that help uh produce and put on this show, and they are also nonprofit groups. And uh for us, each of these events uh does bring in uh several thousand people on, on either of the days. Additionally, here in Burnsville, we have uh a, a few much smaller uh music-type of events. And sometimes we also have vendors that are, that are uh attending these events as well. Um, the first one is our Wednesday in the Park. It has been a great partnership with the School District One Ninety-One and Community Education, uh, Community Education Department. Thirty-seven years uh is what I'm told, I was told today is this is the thirty-seventh year of that event. Uh, we've also have the Rock and Lunch Hour, which takes place on Thursday afternoons down at Nicollet Commons Park. Uh, that event started, I think, the year after that park opened, so back in like two thousand and five. The Friday Night Flicks on the Bricks, that is a outdoor concert event. However, we oftentimes have um some live entertainment or some music or a DJ of some sort, uh providing some entertainment prior to uh the movie actually starting. And I should mention that uh this year, on July twenty-seventh, when we were having the movie La La Land, we're trying a new event kind of in front of that. Uh, we're calling it Friday Night Boogie. It's kind of a happy hour type of an event. Food and beverages by Metatraining Cruise uh will be there for a cost. Uh, but it'll, there'll be music and dancing, you know, prior to and leading up into the, the start of the movie at dusk. Uh, so we'll see where that goes. This is a, like I said, this is a first-time trial for that. Um, and then there's a Sunday Evening Concert Series as well. Uh, that event started uh a long time ago back with the Lake Allen Magnet Center for the Arts. It went away when that group went away. Um, it was picked up by um a small group of, of, of small business owners here in Burnsville. And Sandra Schlefer is from King and Companies is the one that does a lot of work to put together that event every Sunday night. And it's really focused on uh local talent i- is what it is. And it's a, again, it's an hour of, of music out in the park. And it's a wonderful event. Um, I don't have it listed up there, but there are also a couple of uh, of um farmers' markets that we play host to here in Burnsville. Uh, one on Saturday mornings and one on Thursday afternoon. So, there are those options out there in our community. Uh as I mentioned, we did have uh city staff reach out to um a few local civic organizations, the Burnsville Chamber. Uh the Burnsville Center as well as the Ames Center to to gauge interest in a a weekly type of music and market. Event um and to see if anybody had the interest in taking the lead on on such an event. Um in general, the folks really liked the idea. Uh but no group or no one individual shot their hand up saying that they wanted to be the lead organization or the lead person. Um on a project like this. Um and we did hear some comments back uh. Uh from some of the groups that were saying that it really isn't their focus right now to to put something like that together. Or that they didn't have the resources to do something like that. And by that, I think they were really referring to the the bodies to handle. Uh that type of workload. Um they were concerned that whoever did play the lead role in in creating an event like like this. Um would be also tapping into the same financial resources for sponsorships that they are tapping into currently already. Uh so they were concerned of some overlap there. And then uh the one thing we did hear quite regularly is that. Um everyone felt that the city would have to be a major contributor to something like this. Um additionally, I have Buck Hill listed on this slide at the bottom. Uh coincidentally, tonight starts their first night of outdoor concerts.
Yes.
Um. Who who knows where that's gonna go? They're 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 excited about it. Um um but they don't know where that's gonna go. We did, I did talk to them briefly about it. And they were kinda like, well, let's talk next week when it's over and see.
Has the city done anything to help promote that concert series out there at all through any of our communications or anything?
None that I'm aware of, Councilmember Gustafson. Um I'm I'm not certain if our. I don't know, Mr. Beck.
Cause it's kinda a, it's gonna be a regional, it's kinda draw.
Madam Mayor, I do know our partner at Experience Burnsville has done a lot of uh press releases and pushing things out on Facebook regarding that. They it's their role to promote the those types of events for sure.
Thank you.
So uh as I've mentioned, we did uh go look at a couple of possible locations and obviously Nicollet Commons Park comes to mind. Um with the plaza in front of the Ames Center, actual park, and then possible closing of a hundred and twenty-sixth Street. Like uh we've did back in the day for Art and All Jazz Festival. It would be very possible to hold a few thousand people in that area comfortably. Uh provide a safe area so that there were no vehicles in and out of there. Um however, uh talking with the Ames Center folks, they would like for us, if this were the location. To maybe start a little later in June to make sure their dance season has wrapped up and that we're not in conflict with what they have going on and that there's. Ample parking in the area. Um and then uh I haven't talked with the local businesses right on a hundred and twenty-sixth there. I think there's a hair salon, uh fitness uh s- location and then also. Uh a Thriving Financial and and they might have some concerns about that that closure as well on a on a weekly basis. Um so there's a little bit more work that would need to be done in talking about Nicollet Commons Park. Um the other location and and uh we did have our uh skip, uh Neenhouse, did reach out to Burnsville Center to talk to them about the possibility. Of of hosting an event like that. There are certainly uh plenty of room in some of the parking lots. The parking lot on the left uh is the Sears Parking Lot. Uh parking lot on the right is right outside the Gordmans and Chuck E. Cheese entrance area. Um those are just were two areas that seem to be more vacant. However, the the mall is using. Uh some of their parking to store vehicles for some of our local car dealerships. And they did say that they would have to talk to some of their anchor tenants to see if it was within reason, if it was something that they should be doing and promoting and things like that. One of the challenges with with hosting it here at Burnsville Center uh or in the parking lot there, there isn't a lot of electrical. Options out there. So everything would need to be brought in, everything would be portable, which would obviously increase the cost. Uh so as I mentioned, uh we did throw together some costs. Um and and these are, these are estimates, of course. Uh performer costs, uh I don't think we're talking about a. A local garage band. I think we're talking about a bigger draw. Uh so it could be twenty-five hundred dollars and up. And especially if we're talking about an event that takes place over several hours, we're talking about maybe multiple performers that day. So. Twenty-five hundred could be a a low number if you're looking at it like that. Staging and sound is gonna be uh an another cost on a weekly. Uh a weekly event. Um the tents, uh simply renting tents for the vendors, they're about seventy-five dollars apiece. And I realize we we recover those costs with the sale of that booth, but uh again, it's a it's a money upfront that needs to be. Um talked about. Security, uh whether that's uh our own police department uh serving us in a park or it's a. Um rental uh security company. I think two thousand dollars is, again, a number that might be a little bit low, but again, it's a. It's a starting point. Um sanitary accommodations. There's not a lot of restrooms down at Nicollet Commons Park and there's nothing in the parking lot at. Burnsville Center. So all of that uh would need to be brought in um on a weekly basis. And then the cost for garbage, recycling and organic collection. Not sure where even begin with those with those pricing costs. Um so again, on a daily basis, you're starting at. Somewhere around ten thousand dollars, we think, as an estimate, to host an event like that. And that's obviously before. You know, the revenues of sponsorships and donations and things like that come in, so. Um with that. Like they're opening up for questions or comments?
So uh I used to live down in southeast Minnesota um from when I was young. And while the Rochester um Thursdays on First is this big awesome thing now. Um it was not when I was younger. It was very modest when I was younger and it it grew into what it was. And what they did is they took a core of a farmer's market. Um and really kind of expanded from that. In fact, there wasn't live entertainment for quite a while. Like they didn't have the concerts at first. They added those in. Um so it's it's kinda started with growing a farmer's. Market, but they right away added other vendors and um. That was an area rich with restaurants as well in that area and so there was a lot of food vendors. And so that's what it was at its core. And it was just Thursdays on First, cause that was the small area that it was in. Um and but yeah, so now it has expanded and really grown and it's this huge incredible vibrant thing. And by having it reliably on that date, like everyone knows and everyone just adjusts their schedule. That that's what they're doing. They're gonna eat lunch there, they're going there after work, they're, you know, they're gonna be spending their time there. It's now just. Part of the community expectation. And it's also a big draw from all around the area. Um and so everything that's going into it, like I I appreciate the heck out of all the research. That you've you've done on this and and delving into it and getting our costs and and that type of thing. But what I'm wondering is, is this something that? Z- you know, Burnsville could look at as a modest start like what Rochester did. Because if we already have a Thursday Farmer's Market, like we already have that happening on Thursdays. We already have the Thursdays Rockin' Lunch Hour. That's already in in existence. And then we have that Sunday Night Concert Series, which doesn't necessarily have to be on a Sunday night. What if that was then? On Thursday night. Like, we already have a lot of the components in place, but they aren't working together. Like it's not a synergistic thing that's happening. So what if we investigate whether. These entities would like to combine forces and be something even better and bigger. And help each other. What's, what do my fellow council members think about that? Rather than like jumping in and making it huge and awesome from the beginning, which I I love that. I would love, but I I don't think that's feasible.
As it doesn't cost the city any money, I'd be for trying anything. But for me, it's otherwise, it's a financial. Standpoint. But if if you want to, uh again, I'm not against trying anything as long as it doesn't cost money.
I uh I I like that idea. Uh I like the idea of maybe even our Parks and Rec becoming in- involved in all of that as well. As as a city, I mean, we're we're spending a great deal of money right now on consultants. To look at all these opportunities in our city to redevelop, to bring new young blood to the city and that. And I just look at that as all part of our economic development. Having having events that occur in our city, having. You know, they've talked, I've heard some rumors about some different things in our parks that I think are gonna be great for the for our young people and that and. And that that requires some investment on our part as well. And I'm not advocating we just throw a hundred thousand dollars at this thing and go at it, but. I think, I I will tell you, it took us, it takes, took us thirty thousand dollars to do the Jazz Festival. Okay? That was the, that was everything. And that was, that was bringing in international artists and everything. Between our sponsors and what we got for our tent sponsors and that. Eventually, it went up over fifty-some thousand, but we had a base of thirty that actually paid for everything. And that's. So it it doesn't cost that much to do something like this. And to put that together, and you're right, we're already in the park on Thursdays. So what stops us from that park just continuing on till eight o'clock that night with with music and and some tents out there for food and maybe some art? And just switch it up just so we have a a weekly festival. It's already going on. I I don't, I don't think it hurts for the city to be part of that. And I don't know if their department can handle it at this time, but. I think it'd be worth exploring with our our Parks and Recreation Group, cause I know you guys are always looking for things to do. With our citizens in the in the city to engage them in our parks and engage them in what's going on in the community and get out and about and have a sense of the community. Um I I think, I I do think that's a role of of local government to be part of that, especially when we're trying to do the economic development we're trying to do today. I mean, let's give people a reason to come to Burnsville. And I sometimes, I look at what we do and we do some nice things, but we've been doing some nice things for. Thirty years. Things start to, you know, it's maybe we need to change things up a bit. And I'm not slamming any of the events that are going on, but it's just, we need to make it a little more exciting, get, bring a little more cool to our city.
Oh, I'm sorry if I could go there first.
Councilmember Gustafson, um I think about a year ago, we shared that we had gone through our. Parks and Rec System Master Plan and one of those things that's part of that is that we are regularly evaluating our programs. And the offerings in our community. And um I think you've seen our department um bring forward ideas of. Bringing new things to our community and and trying to be more hip and keeping up with trends and whatnot. Um I'm comfortable sharing that the staff is strapped in a lot of areas. We've shrunk as a department over the years. And we've been asked to do more and 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 to keep up with things and to and to keep going and. And we're all for that, but I I think if we were to do some of the basic things talked about this evening of trying to collaborate with. Existing people is one thing. If we were to try to take a lead on that, uh I think it would mean subtraction of. Some of the existing services that we were providing. And I don't have anything that I'd be throwing out there this evening. I would want staff to be. Collaboratively looking at that and trying to figure out uh based on our, on our Parks and Rec System Master Plan and the model that was put forward. On old programs that are not growing anymore, but um I think it would be very difficult to try to do something. Larger on a weekly basis that uh involved a lot of coordinating. Um with part-time staff who are already trying to stay under hours because of HR rules and whatnot, so.
Well, uh like the idea. I like the fact that we have the International Festival of Fire Muster, the Heart of the City Race, the Friday Night Flicks and the Sunday Night Concerts and all those. Because they're all things that um I see as I visit family around the country and I go to their city and and. Or they they send out texts to our our family uh group, you know, the the Rukavina Festival is this weekend or this festival. And it's all about um festivals or community gatherings that make the quality of life in their town enviable. And people say, gosh, I wish we had that going on in our town. But they're not always a hundred percent or majority um civic sponsored. It is the organizations like the Ro- Rotary or Lions or the Foundation or 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 organizations like that. That really are the lead agencies, I'll call them. And they are driving the train and they are raising the money. The city definitely has a role and I don't have any problem with having a role. Like we do in our existing festivals uh for, you know, public safety and street blocking and support and et cetera. And where the dollar amount comes down, I'm as sensitive as uh Councilmember Coughlin is on cost. I do think it can be minimized uh if we're not the lead agency and 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 you just heard from staff, we don't have the staff. Resources to to be the lead agency, but if an organization were to step forward and say. We like what you propose. Here's some pieces that are already there that we could collaborate and then fill in with. Uh a carnival or whatever it might be. Um or a lot of restaurants, booths. I mean, people love to come out and eat food on a street, right out of a tent. All the same restaurants and then some that come from around the area, but there's something different about getting outside in the summertime and going to a festival. And buying food from that restaurant that you've visited a hundred times before off of their tent and there's some specialty thing they're doing. And and then getting a beer or a soda and enjoying the crowds and enjoying the night. I mean, that that I've complimented many times over the years. The Art and All Jazz Festival was a coming together of people and and it was a wonderful way to have fun with your neighbors. Much like night to the night, night to night is, in a hundred different places around the city, the Art and All Jazz was one massive gathering of ten, fifteen thousand people. And it was a blast and I and I hope it does come back one day.
Well, you were talking about the restaurants and.
And the, yeah.
The the funny thing is, the Med Cruz was always our number one food vendor at our Art and All Jazz. And we had a lot of good food vendors there, but he was there and he just. Sold it.
Right.
Some restaurants right there, but out in the park, he was selling it like crazy.
And when hopefully some other projects get built in Heart of the City, there'll be even more people there to be able to enjoy that. So I I'm all, I I I mean, I really like the idea of this. The scope, what I was concerned about from the beginning was not the idea. The idea is wonderful. It's how are we gonna get there and how are we gonna find an organization that's willing to take the lead? So, you know, if uh uh I'm glad to. That uh Mr. Beck brought forth the, hey, just as a FYI, you know, we're thin. You know, we're we're supporting the existing festivals and organizations. We're supporting a lot that's going on. Um so, yeah, we can be that civic supporting agency, but somebody else has to take the lead. And that means the fundraising is gonna be done by that other organization. Which will offset a lot of the costs. Uh because businesses do like to get a part. They also, this brings out, I think, the best in sponsorships. Companies like to be a part of those types of things when there's gonna be a crowd there. And it's a different way of engaging in the community. And supporting the community as well as a marketing sponsorship. Uh so I I would love to see it move forward with that in mind that.
Yes.
You know, we've got.
We're still exploring.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is exploring. And I agree with you. I mean, it, they start out small. Uh the Art and All Jazz started out big, actually.
No, no, we we, our first year, our first year, we had fifteen hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just see, seemed like it was always crowded. Um you know, the Fire Muster thirty-eight years ago probably started out quite a bit smaller than what it is today, so.
JJ wouldn't rent me the park for longer than four hours.
There are rules. There are rules and I'm a rule follower, Councilmember Gustafson.
So I I think what I'm hearing, but correct me if I am phrasing this incorrectly. Is that we would like to explore this further in a smaller scaled-down scope. Perhaps approaching the elements that we already have in place, but seeing if they want to join together.
Do some partnering?
Yeah, do some partnering together. Example being the Thursday Farmer's Market, the Rockin' Lunch Hour. Maybe if the Sunday Night Concert would like to move or, I don't know, maybe the Friday Night Movie. Would like to move, something like that. So elements that we already have in place. That we could start more modestly. Am I hearing that correctly with Bill's caveat and everyone else's caveat of we're not spending a whole bunch of money? Like, that's not happening, right?
And keep Bill happy too.
Yes, I wanna keep Bill happy. Is that correct?
Um in agreement with that.
Okay.
Councilmember Schultz, uh Acting Madam Mayor, sorry. Um are are you open to the night of the week being flexible?
Open to the night of the week being flexible.
Tuesday.
I am, yeah, not.
Yeah, what's wrong with Friday night? Friday's already weekend.
And it could be Friday. I'm open. Very open.
Cause I I'll have a lot of free time on Tuesday.
Yes, you will.
And not for six months.
Okay, so everyone good?
We could start at four, then.
We're clear on that one? Okay. Thank you very much on that, and I really appreciate that. It's very exciting. All right, so let's get to item number seven, and this is our roundtable item. So we need to schedule a special council meeting to canvas the primary election results. The question on the table is, will the afternoon of Friday, August seventeenth, work for all present council members?
Works for me.
Okay.
I am.
You're the one with the hot calendar, so.
The date, when I'm going through the background, so.
You wanna be there, Dan?
Yeah.
You might wanna be there.
When you said, well, afternoon meeting, like, I think we've done this in the past, like, at four.
It can be flexible. It's whatever time. I was looking for if there was any limitations on time. It needs to be before four or after three or something like that.
Anytime after three.
Anytime after three?
I'm good.
Yeah, and book it as soon as possible, because I need to get it on.
Oh, well, shall we say three o'clock?
Well, on my work calendar, I wanna get it on so meetings don't get booked over the top.
Councilmember Kelly, would you be okay with three o'clock?
Sure, or four's better, if four's okay. Are you trying to get it done before?
Nope, that's fine.
It's four o'clock, okay. That seems to be a time that was suggested previously.
It works.
It works.
It was. We may have to revisit that.
That works. Okay, so we'll look at that for four P.M. on Friday, August seventeenth. Okay, so what we're left with is reports on advisory boards and external organizations.
Nothing.
Actually, nothing to report. Thirty-five W is, thirty-five can be messed up for five years, and that'll be the report for the next five years, so.
Well, I'll go into a little more detail for my thirty-five, thank you.
I saw you taking notes.
Yeah, as I usually do, type more than I even repeat. Well, yeah, I thirty-five to six U downtown is horrible, as everyone's already experiencing. Killer construction project will affect over a hundred thousand meters a day. So try not to be one of those and get on the MVTA bus and enjoy a well-chauffeured ride with Wi-Fi and comfortable seats, as my son does into downtown every day, Monday through Friday. The Liz Workman actually developed and published a new Facebook page for I Thirty-Five Solutions Alliance. We all looked at it and voted unanimously to push the publish button. We feel that it's probably a little better platform for updates. It's a little less institutional government type of website and a little bit more free-flowing with images. And images are king these days, as are videos. Our own Ryan Peterson, who left, so I couldn't give him the kudos in person, gave an update from the technical committee. Recommendations on the corridor project options and support resolution. Budget recommendation was for twenty thousand from the I Thirty-Five Solutions budget for analysis and evaluate projects that fit into the corridors. This is all the corridors of commerce that came from the governor. And another five thousand for consultation contingency, depending on what was needed. And that passed unanimously for twenty-five thousand. So we put a lot of trust and faith and responsibility in Mr. Peterson on the I Thirty-Five Solutions. And he's always just a great resource for technical knowledge to that group. So he's, I don't know how long he's been there, but it's great to have him there. Legislative update, the bonding bill passed, of course, with transportation products, projects, four hundred million for trunk highway projects. I was traveling on fourteen for a little bit, but that was sixty-fourteen. And I was interested because there's been so many reports over the decades of safety concerns. But the Highway fourteen between Owatonna and Dodge Center did get a hundred and sixty million, so they're thrilled down there. And a hundred and five million went to Highway twenty-three between Wilmer and St. Cloud. Within the metro, Highway two fifty-two on the north side, if any of us travel the north side, between six-ten and nine ninety-four, they're gonna turn that section into freeway and add a minpass lane. And so that got a hundred and sixty-three million dollars and some local match. Some bridge money and a few other things came out of that. So anyway, the I Thirty-Five Bridge, bringing that, this report closer to home. The bids led on May ninth, and Ames Construction won that. They did revamp and one more lane. Everyone listening, hopefully, the thousands, tens of thousands watching tonight, glad to know that one more lane is going to be opened. So the zipper barrier won't be used, which was the original plan. And it's design build, so it's gonna be complicated and extend the construction from sixty-two down our way. But it's gonna be a traffic challenge. But the extra lane being open is going to mitigate that to some degree. So we're obviously gonna be down a lane, but in either direction, but it's better than the original report and the original design. That's it for that. Fire Muster, moving along, obviously. Tammy, her last name is escaping me, is now the Fire Muster Chair. Tom has stepped aside and he's a co-chair. And she's been running the meetings lately. We had a good meeting. There was a request for volunteers, idea that came out, and it did circulate through the city's email and announcement system. And we had a couple new faces show up to help on the board, so that was a great idea. It brought in some fresh people to help. A few people had moved out of the area and were unable to come back this year. So we got some fresh energy on the Fire Muster Board. So hopefully with the weather, expecting a great year. As many of you know, this is gonna be year two for a free entry Fire Muster. And we're hoping that the marketing and advertising for that will continue to build the numbers, which will raise the beer sales and food sales and make the event even bigger. There has been some discussion about a location alternative where it can grow larger. But it was noted in an earlier presentation that electricity might be a challenge at that location. So I'm not sure where that'll go, but the Fire Muster is anticipating this constant growth with the free entry. And the grounds are getting a little crowded. And the ability to actually handle a larger crowd for a larger national band, for instance, that they anticipate attracting or being able to put in place is beginning, you know, looking at the location in its entirety and how the space is being used, we are gonna make some adjustments. So they are gonna make some adjustments this year to try and better use the space more efficiently and move things around after some testing was done last year. But there is a long-term concern over being able to handle a crowd if it grows significantly each year with the current place. But it is, it's actually a great location, but it does have its limitations. And of course, fireworks are always a blast to watch from there. So that's it for Fire Muster, I Thirty-Five. Burnsville Public Policy Committee has had some great discussions of late. Obviously, in an election year, they're planning their candidate forum. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Yes.
Would you like to make a request to the Fire Muster for the parade this year? I'd like to push a grocery cart and collect food from the food shelf instead of riding in a car and do one of these things.
That's a great idea. You should just put that on your application, or, you know, your parade.
My city application.
Pardon?
My city application.
Yeah, is that what you're gonna do?
Be a Fire Muster.
Yeah, Fire Muster.
Yeah, the Fire Muster on behalf of the city right now. Yeah, I think that would be, I mean, I can't answer for them, but I don't know why they wouldn't, they would object to that.
Anyone's welcome to join me that would like.
You just have to make sure people are aware that they can bring a can or a box of food to throw it into the shopping cart. Otherwise, you'll be pushing an empty shopping cart.
That right on the Fire Muster website.
Okay, do we have any other business? Okay, since we do not have any additional items before us tonight, we are adjourned by acclamation. Thank you.
Nice job, thank you.
Nice job, Madam Mayor.